Welcome, everybody, to the January 11th, 2023 CDV Edina Planning Commission Meeting. We're grateful you're here tonight, to the residents that are here and those tuning in remotely. Your participation and feedback's vital to this process as we together navigate the change in Edina. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It is important that you know all comments that have been submitted have been reviewed and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there is one public hearing. Individuals who would like to provide testimony remotely for the public hearing can call the following number: (786) 496-5601, and enter conference pin (014) 3071. When you would like to speak and get in the queue to speak, press *1 on your keypad. An operator will introduce you when it is your turn. Please state your full name and address before speaking. Everyone is allowed three minutes to speak. Staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they have gone over three minutes. Remember, you do not need to call in or comment live tonight if you've already provided feedback. Also, do not repeat information already presented. Please provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. So with that, call the meeting to order, and roll call.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Gandhi.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here.
All right, next order of business is approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Before we do that, does anyone have any changes proposed to it? If not, welcome motion.
I move to approve the minutes, or the agenda as is.
A nice second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, the approval of the meeting minutes from our prior meeting on December 14th. Anyone have any changes that they propose for that? Seeing none, welcome a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, next, we have the community comment. So we will now hear from residents in person who would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. You may speak up to three minutes. After giving your full name and address, a green light will appear. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on. When you're out of time, the red light will turn on and we'll let you know. Is there anyone here for community comment? Seeing none, we will close community comment. Moving right along to our first public hearing for tonight. For anyone tuning in for the first time, basic process here is staff will provide a report, the planning commission will ask questions, the applicant will have a chance to provide their own presentation, followed by questions, and then we'll open it to a public hearing, after which we'll close and bring it back to the planning commission to discuss and make a final vote on the matter. And we have Planner Akker here to give the staff report presentation.
Thank you. Chair, members of the planning commission, the property is at 4920 Sunny Slope East, and the request is for a first-floor elevation variance. The subject property is located along Sunny Slope East as well as Hilltop Lane. It's a through lot. The existing house is to the right, the survey, and then also a photograph of the existing home. The proposed home is on the left. It is a tear-down rebuild proposal, and then they would be reorienting the new house towards Hilltop Lane. It is a rather unique situation to have a through lot. There aren't any rules or anything that would prevent somebody from reorienting their home if they do have a through lot, if they wish to be oriented towards the opposite side. So this is a compliance table for the proposed new home. The left side and right side of the home maintain the minimum city standards of 10 feet. The proposed home on the left side will provide 29.1 feet for side yard setback, and then on the right side, 11.8 feet. The new front yard, which is along Hilltop, the city standard for front yard setback would be 44.15 feet. They are proposing a 44.3-foot front yard setback. And then the new rear yard, which is now along Sunny Slope, is a 25-foot city standard, and they will be proposing a 25.1-foot setback from the Sunny Slope or rear, new rear yard. The overall building height maximum is 40 feet, and then they are proposing a 37.025-foot overall height, and that's measured from average existing grade. The building coverage maximum is 25%, and they are proposing a 20.6% coverage. Impervious surface maximum is 50%. They're proposing 39.06% impervious surface, and that includes the house, the pool, the pool decking, driveway, there's quite a few retaining walls, all of that is included. And then the request is for a first-floor height elevation variance. The requirement would be one foot above what's existing for the old house, and that is 926.4. They would like to elevate it to 936. The reason behind that is there's a 31-foot difference between the area of the lot that's by Sunny Slope as opposed to up a hill towards Hilltop Lane. There's a 31-foot difference between elevation. So this is the front and rear of the new home. Front, of course, now fronting Hilltop Lane. It's a one-story home with a walkout. Here are the elevations, front, rear, and then the left side, which is actually showing it at pool deck level, and then the right side showing along that side going from the first floor down to the walkout. And this shows the property in context along Sunny Slope and Hilltop with the homes on either side. This is the only lot that's around Hilltop Lane that fronts Sunny Slope. The property that is adjacent to the right, that was approved in 2013 by the city for a tear-down rebuild, the house that had originally been on the lot, fronted Sunny Slope East, and it was rebuilt along Hilltop Lane, and they received approval from the city in order to elevate their first floor to 940, which is three to four feet higher than what 4920 Sunny Slope East is requesting. So this is the new home in context, a drawing of the proposed house at 4920 with 4800 Hilltop and then 4810 on either side. This is the lower-level floor plan, the main floor, and then the pool is to the left. It's not in the rear yard. And then this is, this was provided by the applicant, showing the height differential between 4800 Hilltop, actually, it's the house to the right. I don't know why they were switched, but that's how it was provided. The proposed home would be 28 feet, a little over, a little less than 29 feet in height from finished grade. And then the existing house to the right varies between 32 and 1/2 feet and 34 feet, 4 and 1/2, or 4 and 4/4 inches. So there is, you can see visually that the house that's proposed, the new home, is at a lower ridge height than the adjacent home. So the primary issue is will the variance relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance requirements? The proposed use is permitted in the R1 Single Dwelling Unit District, complies with all of the zoning standards with the exception of the first-floor elevation. The reason for the first-floor elevation variance request is due to the proposed new home being reoriented to Hilltop Lane, which is 31 feet higher than the lot elevations near Sunny Slope East. The topography of the lot is a practical difficulty preventing a reasonable relocation of the proposed new home. No variance would be needed for first-floor height if the original home had been built oriented towards Hilltop. The property is unique in that there are street frontages on two sides of the lot. The existing house is oriented towards Sunny Slope. There are no rules that would prohibit reorientation towards Hilltop Lane, however, it is the first-floor elevation that is the issue that has to be addressed in order for that to be accomplished. The applicant would like to reorient the home towards Hilltop Lane, similar to the house that's adjacent, that was built in 2014, that's adjacent to it at 4800 Hilltop, and it would actually, you know, be inconsistent, it would be consistent with first-floor elevations that are currently around Hilltop. Topography elevation difference between Hilltop Lane and East Sunny Slope is not self-created and limits design options by confining a new home to a limited location on the lot. The spirit and intent of the ordinance when it was originally written was meant to address. At the time, there were a lot of tear-down rebuilds, and the homes were being rebuilt, and they were much elevated beyond where they had been previously, and they were higher in terms of first floor and window heights than the homes on either side. So it was a way to try to address a tear-down rebuild in an existing neighborhood where you have neighbors on either side, trying to maintain a consistency. In this situation, it really, I think it matches the spirit and the intent of the ordinance because it will not be, it will not force the house to be up above the first floor, above neighboring properties. It will simply match them, or actually might be a little bit lower than that. Granting the variance will match the character of the neighborhood, given the reorientation, the proposed new home will be oriented towards Hilltop and will be in line with the other two homes on either side. It will maintain the front yard setback. There had been a previous request, and I think most of you were here in November, there was an application for a similar home to be located, and at that time, the applicant had requested a front yard setback variance as well as the first-floor height variance. This has been redesigned now to meet all of the ordinance requirements with the exception of that first-floor height, which the house can't be reoriented without. Staff does recommend approval of the 9.6-foot first-floor height variance for the new home at 4920 East Sunny Slope. Approval is based on the following findings: The practical difficulty is caused by the existing elevation change of the lot. The first floor needs to be raised to be reoriented to Hilltop. There are circumstances that are unique to the subject property. Those unique circumstances include the elevation change in the lot and having two street frontages. The proposal would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The first-floor elevation will be consistent with neighboring properties, which is, or was, the goal of the ordinance when it was originally written. The new home is a single-story walkout. Adjacent homes are two-story homes or multi-level, so they are taller than the existing or what they're proposing. The new home will not have a negative impact on the streetscape and will match the required average front yard setback. Any approval should be subject to the following conditions: Subject to the plans and survey date stamped December 9th, 2022; subject to compliance with the engineering memo dated January 2nd, 2023; and subject to compliance with the amended tree ordinance with trees being replaced on-site per the recommendations of the city forester. The tree ordinance is now in effect. It was in effect as of January 1st, so when they do apply for that building permit, they would be under that new tree ordinance. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Planner Akker, for the presentation. Bringing it back to the planning commission, fellow commissioners, have any questions for Planner Akker?
I'm not sure if this question is for you, but, so these are certainly familiar plans, as we've seen before. My question is about the driveway. So one thing that's different is the driveway will remain, or the entrance will remain on Sunny Slope. Is that correct? And, oh, the driveway changes?
The driveway will be off of Hilltop.
Okay. That's what I didn't understand. So the address will change from Sunny Slope to Hilltop?
Yeah, I would assume so, and that's something that the building official does. He would reassign the address.
Could you bring up the plan view to that, if possible? I know they included both existing and the new, so it could have, yeah.
So this is the new driveway here off of Hilltop. Is that what you're referencing? And then the current driveway, or the old driveway, comes off of Sunny Slope and curves in. Oops. And you can see that here in the photograph, but the garage door is a side-loading garage, so it would be loading off of Hilltop and turning into the garage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Strauss?
Planner Akker, so I think that this compliance with the new tree plan, I mean, that's a significant.
It will have to.
I mean, for the project, the 22 plan would have been somewhat, quite a bit less as far as protection of the existing trees or what requirements that have to be replaced, though. So this was another, I mean, the fact that this is up here for review now, that's a pretty good improvement over what we were considering before.
The city forester has already pre-reviewed this project, but will do a, you know, deeper dive or a more critical review at the time of building permit, but he's already walked the site and has done a pre-review of it.
And I think you did state that the November review was under the current tree requirements.
Yeah, I mean, that predated January 1st.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Just two questions. The first one is on the driveway from Sunny Side Slope. I know that's gonna, once the house gets reoriented, it's gonna come off of Hilltop, but then I read in the report that it has to be replaced with bitumen or maybe like an asphalt type of path. Is that a requirement that it has to be an existing path of asphalt, or could that just be dug up and replaced with dirt, turned into a garden, something like that?
Are you referring to the existing driveway?
Yeah.
Engineering typically reviews the driveway where it would be connecting to the street, and typically what they would require is if, if they are changing the orientation of the driveway, they would have to remove one for the other, and they would generally require it to be replaced with turf or landscaping. They don't want it to remain, you know, even if they decide to disconnect it from the street.
Gotcha. So it's not gonna be a road of any kind once that house gets reoriented?
No. I mean, you can ask the applicants if they, you know, what they wish to do with their rear yard, but typically the driveway would be removed and then landscaped.
Gotcha. The second question is on the reorientation. I know you mentioned in the report that there is no rule that a house could be reoriented. Is that a general rule across the city, or is it specific to this case where there's two roads adjacent to the property?
It would apply to a situation where you're either a corner lot or a through lot, or we have rare situations where you have right-of-way on three sides of a lot. The property owner has their choice where they want to front, or what they want to consider their front yard, or their rear yard, or their side yard. If this were a vacant lot and there never had been a house on it, they could orient the house to Hilltop Lane, and I'm assuming that they could, as they are right now, at a first-floor elevation that would kind of match the neighbors, so they wouldn't need a variance if this were a vacant lot and never had a house on it. But because there's a house that's facing Sunny Slope and the first floor is at a lower elevation, they need to get a variance to reorient.
So if I understand this, because of the situation with the roads on either side, and other situations where you're like on a corner lot, for example, or you have three roads around your home, you could reorient your house in that case, no problem?
Yes, you can.
But if you're a standard Edina resident where you just have one road going in front of your house, it might be silly to reorient your house, but it still doesn't prevent you from doing that, correct?
I guess I'm confused what.
So a regular home like mine, for example, I have neighbors on both sides, and I have neighbors butting up against back of my home, right? So I, there's just one road. If I wanted to flip my house around?
Oh, like you want to put your front door behind?
Exactly.
You can do that, but the front yard setback is still dictated by the distance between the lot line adjacent to the street and where that, the front, or the face of the house is. Because we have situations where somebody might have a front door, and it's further recessed and it's more towards the side, or the house is sort of facing the side yard instead of the street. That front yard setback is still dictated by where the street is.
Interesting.
So in this instance, they can choose to have the front yard or have it, have it be on Sunny Slope, or they can choose to have it on Hilltop. The problem they have is they have this grade change, 31-foot difference that they have to address.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, I just wanted to think about it a little bit more. It makes sense. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Any other questions? I just have one. Could you clarify what the front yard setback request was previously and how it compares to what the code is today? Do you have that information?
I believe it was 9.55 feet. That's what the request was, because they wanted to be at like 36-something, but they had to be at, the minimum is 41.13 feet, I might have.
So 34.6?
Yeah, 34.6. So the previous plan, I knew I had that. City standard is 44.15 feet because you have to average the front yard setbacks of the homes on either side on Hilltop. And the previous plan was they were looking to accomplish a 34.6-foot setback, and they are now at requests, or they are now at 44.3, which doesn't require a front yard setback request.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you for the questions. We can turn it to the applicants if you have a review or a presentation you'd like to make. Now's the time.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. So I read through what was submitted. Sounds pretty good. So if I understand correctly, the way how you drive up to the home currently off of Sunny Slope is just, you know, it's, you know, like during the wintertime, for example, it's icy, it can be hard to get up there. It's kind of steep, so it makes.
I think today is probably the best.
Best example.
Best scenario for us right now.
Right.
Like going up that driveway on a day like today would be difficult, and then entering traffic on Sunny Slope, coming into traffic, you know, from your garage also would be somewhat dangerous, having the ice on the driveway.
That makes sense. So when I think about the home, other homes in the area are two stories. This is one story.
Correct.
So I'm guessing it's a home with a very beautiful vaulted ceiling.
There are. There are several vaulted ceilings on the main floor.
Several vaulted ceilings. Is it possible, just curious, is it possible to design a home where you could make that two-story home but still be within that 40-foot height?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the neighboring property did just that. They're a two-story home. They still fit within the building height requirement of the city. So it's not, we're not lower because of the city or of the ordinance. It's something the homeowner chose not to do a second story. They didn't need the space.
Gotcha. And then, this might be for the architects maybe, but, you know, when we have homes that go into the land like that, there can be water issues, right? So I saw in the report, there were swales, but I wasn't sure where they were positioned. So my questions are just like around water management, you know? How would these swales help, you know, move water and channel it away from your home or the home and from the neighboring properties? The second one was on the retaining walls, if that too is a water mitigation type of a solution. And finally, would the basement of the home have any kind of like sump pump setup kind of thing, or is that even necessary for a home, home like that in that, in that location?
Sure. To regard the swales, they're gonna be on either side, so we're gonna have them on the west and east side of the house. They're more or less depressions in between, so the grade at the house will come down, and then the grade at the neighboring house comes down, and they create a smaller channel that just directs the water away from both but out towards Sunny Slope. The same is true on the other side, where we actually have a retaining, in the retaining walls, you have the retaining wall being high, you have the house being high, and there's a smaller swale in between the two that goes, and there's actually gonna be a catch basin at the far side or on the Sunny Slope side of that retaining wall that will take it in an underground pipe and out at grade on the backside of the house.
Gotcha.
And then the house itself will have a sump pump system, so around the perimeter of the house at the basement level, there'll be a pipe that any water that does get down there would go into the pipe, go into the sump, and then get pumped out of the house.
Would these swales have, could be something that you would control completely, or would your neighbors have to buy into it or support it? If they build a wall, for example, on their side, would that be a problem for you in the future?
The swales are completely contained on this property, so the neighbors have no, should have no maintenance whatsoever as far as those go, because everything is on the property itself. And then as far as maintenance and that kind of thing go, it's a depression.
Would these swales have, could be something that you would control completely, or would your neighbors have to buy into it, or, or, or support it? If they built a wall, for example, on their side, would that be a problem for you in the future?
The swales are completely contained on, on this property, so the neighbors have no, should have no maintenance whatsoever, as far as those go, because everything is on the, the property itself. And then, as far as maintenance and that kind of thing go, it's, it's a depression within the grade, so if the, the homeowner of some, something happened where the actual dirt on site was changed, then it would be an issue. But if, if things are built as they're designed, and there shouldn't be any real maintenance that needs to be done to the site, because it's, it's literally kind of cut into the earth.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have one.
Yeah.
So as you know, from our previous meeting, one of the sticking points was the other variance that was requested, the front yard setback. And while we can kind of see it through studying the plans, I would just like you to kind of explain to us, and those tuning in, how you were able to accommodate pushing the building back?
Sure.
And making it work.
So the original plan, so right now, we have sort of an L-shaped, or an L-shaped design for the main floor, where the garage comes off at a 90-degree angle to the house. So the house itself stays oriented that way. We had a three-car garage that was coming off at the L. What we did was actually take one of the stalls off the garage, so now it's only a two-stall garage, but it's extra deep. Because if you, if you recall from Planner Akers' presentation, the, the setback we had to the neighboring property was like 40-some feet, so we had some ability to change the depth of the garage. So we maintained a three-car garage, somewhat less usable, but still, structure-wise. And so there's only two stalls that you can drive in and out of.
Great, thanks. Appreciate the creativity. That's it for questions. We can begin our public meeting portion of this, and we will now hear from residents who would like to provide testimony. I guess, to participate, you can call in now at the number that was listed earlier, 786-496-5601, and enter conference PIN 0143071Pound. Again, everyone's allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your full name and address. Staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they have gone over the three minutes. And remember, it is not necessary to provide testimony if you've already provided comments via voicemail, or bettertogether@Edina.org. Call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward. We can do that, and then do the in-person after, if that works. Sure? Or should we do it the other way around?
Let's do it the other way around.
Okay.
Just so, the operator will be at the end.
Sure. And just for some context, we did not receive any comments through Better Together Edina.org. But like I mentioned earlier, whoever is here in person and would like to speak, you can come up to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak. When the green light turns on, when it turns yellow, you got 30 seconds left, and when, when it's red, we'll let you know. And again, please state your full name and address.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Adon, and I live at 4800 Hilltop Lane in Edina, which is the adjacent property to the proposed site here. I did grow up in the sunny slope neighborhood, and moved back into the sunny slope neighborhood in 2014. I also spoke at the last Planning Commission meeting, so you have the information that I talked about in your records, I'm sure. In my opinion, unfortunately, I think the proposal under consideration is essentially unchanged, with the exception of shrinking, changing the, the garage stall, the footprint of the property, with very little difference to what they did on the last time. In addition, one of my major concerns is the border trees between the properties that are still proposed to be taken down. Four large, mature, healthy border trees. With this proposal, if you look at it up on the screen where they had it, the house is literally gonna be sitting on where those trees are within 10 feet of the property line. Another concern I have, and I'm sure they've, they probably have it in their proposal, but the entire property, as well as the entire sunny slope neighborhood, falls entirely within the Minnehaha Creek watershed district. So I think there's an issue about drainage from the actual house itself and the property, but it, it goes into Minnehaha Creek. So I think, if that hasn't been addressed, I think it's important that it should. In addition, I do think the proposal would significantly change the character of the neighborhood. If you drive through sunny slope when you're done here and look at it, the houses are not right next to each other, with few exceptions. There typically is a lot of foliage or mature trees between properties. And what they're proposing is taking down four, well, two of the trees, I understand, because they fall basically dead center in the middle of the property. So I don't have any problem with that, because they're expanding the size of the house. But because of the size of the footprint and the hardscape, they are taking out four major mature trees that are on the property line. And I do think that does change the, the character of the neighborhood. This is not, we don't live in country club where you wave at your neighbor across, you know, when you're making coffee in the morning, which, this makes it a lot closer to that. I also do find it interesting that on the last Planning Commission meeting, the city staff voted against this. They, they, their recommendation was against approving this project. And with the exception of taking away a variance by changing the way the garage is configured, they have now recommended it. So I'd be curious to see what the rationale for that was. I understand one of the variances was taken away. I think it was a little bit of architectural jujitsu to do that, but that's just my opinion. I, I hope you guys would carefully look at the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks again. And if there's anyone else here in person that'd like to speak, now's the time. Please come up to the podium. Sure.
Okay, because I'm gonna be looking at the compliance report, and I just wanted to ask about, when you see the numbers, like the 44 feet, the 30 feet, that, that is, the setbacks are where the house is, right? Not where the hardscape is?
Correct, unless it's...
Okay. I don't know if you have a copy, or need a copy?
While they speak, could, could you show her where to put?
I kinda need to, okay, let me just put it here. Can you show them there? This is just the variance request.
Oh, did this come from the applicant?
It did. It came from the applicant. So this is...
I think if you put it down right here.
It's just page two of the variance request. Okay. I think, hopefully, I don't need to look at it. Can I stand over here then, or, can you not hear me? I have to stand at the podium. I will do as well.
Do you have a microphone she could use, or?
Can I use your microphone, so I can, because otherwise? Sorry. Yes.
I think I have a copy of it in the top one. Is that the one?
That's the one. I had just highlighted what I kinda wanted to talk about.
Sure. Yeah, just slide it over.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we can start the green light now. So you got three minutes.
My name is Amy Adon. I live at 4800 Hilltop. I would like to start by saying that we're not opposed to building. Since we built in 2014, there's been a tear down directly to the south of us that required a setback variance, no issue. We've had two gut rehabs that, one is still going on directly behind us, one just down the street. We've had no issues. I really look at this project as being different. And as our house is very frequently compared to this project, and actually referred to directly in the December 9th application, I just want to refer to pages two and four in here, that, just so we can talk about the differences a little bit. Number one, I think, is the, the lot coverage. Our hardcover is 19% house and less than 1% impervious surface, or other. And that's really just our driveway and some boulder walls. 4920's total hardcover is 39.1, I think it was 06%, with 20.6% being house, and 18, over 18% being impervious service, surface because of the pool deck, fire pit, et cetera. So I think the numbers, as they're shown on here, are misleading. Another thing is the total lot area and the size. Our lot is .56 of an acre, and their lot is .48 of, of an acre. Now, our lot's almost 17% larger than their lot. And also, our lot has just a slope going, had a slope going down to sunny slope, where, as you know, there's a very steep drop between sunny slope and where their property kind of begins. I also think that the west side setback of 29.1 feet is misleading, as this is the distance from the house to the lot line, and does not take into consideration that large hardcover of pool, and deck, and fire pit. I think the biggest issue that nobody has talked about is just that rear setback. Our rear setback from our house is 58 feet, not 56.3, it's 58 feet. They're talking about having their, going to that 25-foot, which is the, the rear of the house, okay? I reviewed, when I reviewed the application, I was sort of, I was thinking about 25 feet being the rear of the house, right? And we're at 58 feet. So the 25-foot setback to the rear is not in line with the average existing yard setbacks of other houses on the street. And it also requires an 11-foot drop from that 25 feet, from the back of the house, to the, to the ground. So you've got 11 feet, and then 25 feet. So you've got this house, basically, on top of East Sunny Slope, and on top of the neighbors on the other side. So if approved, that house will just really create an imposing facade. I, I haven't seen that addressed from a, a cityscape, or, I'm sorry, a streetscape issue. The front isn't the issue. I think the back is the issue, not discussed at all. I know my husband talked a little bit about this, but one of the reasons that people do love sunny slope is the topography. And when we built, you could see that we kept every tree that we could on either side of the house. The old owner of 4920 actually asked us to put in additional firs. It's on their property, but we did that, because he wanted more privacy.
You can wrap up.
I will wrap up. But I agree that I don't understand how the project is really any different than it was before, other than we don't have the, the setback in the front. So I, I'd like to understand that, but I think there needs to be consideration of the rear.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in person that would like to speak on this matter? Again, please state your full name and address. You got three minutes.
My name is Stephanie, 53 Lake Street East, Wayzata, Minnesota. I'll keep my comments very short. I'm the home builder of the, the home at 4800, right next door to this home. And I just want to point out that, while I understand the comparison between the two homes, and everything that the homeowners next door just said, all of those points should be taken in context of the fact that everything that is being proposed here conforms with all of the rules. The setbacks might be less, the hardcover might be more, because it's a smaller lot, but all of, the, the proposed home conforms with all of those setbacks.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else here in person that'd like to speak on this matter? See, now we will turn it over to anyone who has called in, and since we went out of order, I can read that again. Is there anyone in queue?
It sounds like there is someone in the queue, but they need to press star one to speak. So if they would like to speak right now, please select star one. Let's give them about a minute to do so. And if the person starts, or comes into the queue, they'll start talking. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, this, can you, am I online?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, this is Steve Lundberg. I live across the street from the proposed property at 4801 Hilltop. Just had a couple of comments. I want to be supportive of the Adonans. I think there was a settled expectation when they built their property, and we built our property, that the property in question was gonna maintain the first-floor level that it, it currently has. I don't know if it's fair to say that the only reason for the ordinance to have the first-floor level only very a foot is because you always want to have the houses at the same height. In this case, there's a dramatic change in the topography, or I guess the, the neighborhood, if you will, because in the back going down sunny slope, you're not gonna be looking up at essentially what looked like about a four-story building. And there's no trees back there, because it was the front yard. Of course, they had no trees in it. Maybe there's one tree in there that'll probably disappear. But I think it's going to be pretty dramatic change on sunny slope, and that may not be so desirable for the neighbors across the street. And also, I think if you're gonna give the variance, I, I would like to see a little bit more setback from the Adonan side of the property, because that wasn't anything they anticipated. And I think in fairness, if you're gonna grant the variance, it'd be good to see some more setback on that side for, for their benefit. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people waiting in the queue to speak?
Operator, can you please confirm that there are no other people waiting to speak tonight?
Confirming no other participants on the queue.
Thank you very much. I think we are all set to go.
Okay. With that, I will welcome a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing?
All in favor, say aye.
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 So moved. So we'll bring it back now to the planning commissioners for discussion. So I'll look to my left and right, who would like to share some wisdom, or thoughts, or concerns, or whatever. All right, Commissioner Strauss.
Well, I've been convinced, I, I think Planner Akar did a very good job explaining the, the one variance that was required, which was the first-floor elevation, and it solely was the fact that the previous house fronted on sunny slope, and this one on hilltop, and it seems like. And then their other, their ability, their, their willingness and commitment to, to correct those variances that they were asking for previously, for those to go away. I think that's an important point, that they do conform. I mean, those, those numbers were set, they're, you know, that's, that's our job, is to, not to say what feels best, it's what complies. And so I think they hit on all of the, I thought the ask was too much before. I think it's now appropriate. And the, the tree benefit, the, 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 the current tree ordinance, I think is a, is a very improvement for the overall project, too. So it's well served. So I will support the petition for the appeal.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Anyone else? Commissioner Miranda?
Sure. So, yeah, there were two variances requested before. Otherwise, as Commissioner Strauss mentioned, it met all guidelines, and so it, the house itself, in terms of the roof line is not too high, it doesn't take up too much space on the property, the hardscape is within the, the bounds. And so really, what we're looking at is basically, you know, the change in removing the front yard variance request. And, you know, it meets that. So despite the, the preponderance of hardscape or whatever, that all meets city guidelines, and so there's little we can do about that. And again, as Commissioner Strauss mentioned, the tree ordinance is much improved over the old one, and so that will mitigate, I think, some of the concerns people had. In terms of the backyard setback, there, you know, other than the setback number itself, we don't really consider anything there. So, and it meets that guideline. So, yeah, I think this is pretty, pretty cut and dry for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Vidia?
Yes, I would concur with my fellow commissioners. And if you remember, and I think most of you were here, a couple of months ago, it was a divided vote when we, we went to take a vote, and we ended up denying it in accordance with the recommendation of staff. And I think, as my fellow commissioner said, there have been a, a couple of minor changes, and that is the difference in one or two votes, because of the trees, and because of the creativity around eliminating the second variance required. So I am of the opinion it does not change the character of the neighborhood, and that it would be a nice addition to the neighborhood, and that the house next door isn't the standard to which we are applying some of these asks. So I will support it.
Um, when I look at this home and I look at the, the roof line, the roof line will be below, uh, that forty-feet threshold, um, even when we grant, if we grant this variance of the first floor level. So I think if we're looking at the roof line escapes between the homes in the neighborhood, this one passes that test for me. Um, regarding the setback variance, I think, um, the owner addressed it. I went back into some old planning commission notes. I think it was back in July of twenty sixteen, I think it was forty-eight oh-one, had a very, had a, a variance request. Um, I think the, the request was supposed to be like forty-three-point-six foot, but it was approved at thirty-eight-point-six, so like a five-foot difference. The point there is that we're not granting a variance for setback, and the homeowner did what they needed to do to make that happen, so that is a plus from my perspective, even though that we did grant variances in the past for homes in that exact same neighborhood. Um, regarding the character of the neighborhood, um, this home, when I look at the designs and I look at the other homes in the neighborhood, it's very similar. It's, it's a very grand design. Um, the diversity of this house, I think, is important because the owner, I guess, could have put two stories on there, and then it would be like the next house next to it. But it's a one-story home with a huge vaulted ceiling, which brings a new kind of diversity of housing in, into that area. So if I'm a homeowner and I'm trying to find something different, this would be it. Um, and so I think that's a good thing, right? Um, having that different design character in this space. I know last time there were some concerns about traffic on the cul-de-sac. When you flip that house from Sunny Slope to Hillside, you know, there'd be cars coming through that area, but one home, I think, in this, in this area, uh, I didn't see this as being a big concern with traffic, um, and increasing traffic on that cul-de-sac. So I feel like if that was a concern in the past, um, I don't think that's a huge con-concern going forward. I would certainly be in favor for this, um, change and, uh, for this request, provided that some key points with regards to the trees. Once the forester gets time to review the tree design, right, and the replantings occur with the right species, et cetera, in the right locations, over time, that tree is gonna, you know, grow up and maintain the facade of that space. Um, regarding the, the, uh, the grading and the engineering survey, I think that's important, too. The grading is going to be critical for this home because of how it's being reoriented and the runoff situation. Once that can be mitigated and the, and the engineers and the survey give it the thumbs up, um, then I could see no issues with this having, um, grading or water issues. So granted that the forester, uh, does bless the tree planting, uh, in accordance with the tree ordinance and the grading survey and the engineering report come back positive, I see this as a positive change for this neighborhood.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments?
Sure. Um, I guess, uh, I sympathize with the neighbors in terms of, uh, the, the setbacks, but the, the accordances are made for a reason, and like, uh, I would have to agree with fellow commissioners in the sense that like, all the setbacks, uh, meet the accordance except for the height setback. Um, so from my perspective, um, I would have to, like, agree with, uh, the fellow commissioners in that this looks like a positive change.
Thanks. Yeah, I, um, I'm in support of this variance request, too, and, um, thinking back to the last meeting, I think I supported the fundamental ask here of turning, turning the home around, because again, this is a unique lot, so, you know, with one side of it touching one street and the other touching another, you're gonna have a back facing one of those streets. The current situation is, at least from Hilltop, is you kind of see the, the top of the house and a lot of trees. But that doesn't prevent someone from getting creative and turning the house to face that street, and I think it completes that cul-de-sac in a nice way. Uh, the concern that I raised last time was, if you were to have built a new house from the original level of level one, you know, that effective difference of what you would see from Hilltop would be a lot less, because, you know, this is a thirty-seven-foot house, but it's nine-and-a-half feet above where they could build it. So you are seeing more of the house from Hilltop than if you had built it from the level of level one as it currently sits. And that was why myself and others had at least concerns to maintain that front yard setback, because if you can keep the house farther away from Hilltop, it won't be as imposing from Hilltop. And so, um, there's nothing that really controls something similar in other neighborhoods with topography, where you have a walkout basement, where the backyard looks a lot taller than the front. And since this is still below the forty feet, it's going, it's going to look a bit more imposing than what's there, but they're very similar situations in the neighborhood, especially if you're down on the creek around Country Club. You see four stories of a building pretty much everywhere. So for that, I, I applaud the creativity to come back, um, and, you know, make, make it work, um, choose a design that fits. Um, I think the use is reasonable, and I support this as well. And welcome a motion from fellow commissioners if they have one.
I could try to make a motion.
Go for it.
I make a motion to approve, uh, this home, uh, on forty-two, forty-nine twenty Sunny Slope Road, but the condition that the engineering report and the forester report and the tree ordinance, ordinances are met.
Is friendly amendment to just add the remaining conditions of the staff report?
Yes.
Okay.
I would include that as well.
Have a second.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And I was in aye, by the way. Thank you very much. Um, good luck with your project. It'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood, and, uh, we'll move on to our next piece of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. So we're going to talk about accessory dwelling units, and we have Addison here to give us a presentation, and after which we will make a motion to approve or modify the communication regarding ADUs. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Um, so this is, uh, an item from the, uh, the commission's twenty-twenty-two work plan to, uh, review and recommend an ordinance for accessory dwelling units. Uh, more specifically, at this time, the task was to research the topic, look into the pros and cons of accessory dwelling units, um, get a better understanding of them, and then, uh, make a recommendation that we move forward with actually drafting an ordinance. Commissioner Smith was the lead commissioner on this item. Um, he and Commissioner Miranda, Chair Bennett, uh, met regularly over, um, twenty-twenty-two with various city staff, um, gathering information, and, uh, that subgroup presented their findings at the November sixteenth, uh, work session to the rest of the planning commission. Uh, that did include a recommendation that, uh, we move forward with drafting an ordinance, and that presentation is included in your packet for background information. Um, so the next step is for the planning commission to make a formal recommendation to the city council by approving an advisory communication. And as the lead, uh, commissioner, or as the lead for this work plan item, Commissioner Smith has drafted the advisory communication in your packet that includes a recommendation that the city move forward with drafting an ADU ordinance. Um, the decision to move forward with drafting an ordinance does not commit the city to adopting one, it's just the next step in the process. Um, so decisions about how ADUs would be regulated within EDINA, that would be the next step after we get authorization from the city council if they so choose to go that route. Um, so the planning commission is asked to approve the advisory communication, um, as is or, um, with an amended recommendation. Um, if you do take action tonight, uh, that recommendation would, I believe, go to the city council at their February seventh meeting. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess, first, has anyone had a chance to review and have any comments, questions, or proposed modifications? Any of that? I guess hearing silence, I'm assuming there is general support for this communication, so I'd welcome a motion to approve the atta, the, uh, advisory communication regarding ADUs.
I'll make a motion to approve the attached advisory communication regarding ADUs.
Second, please.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Well, that was short and sweet and nice. Oh, just about eight o'clock. All right. Uh, next on the agenda, chair and member comments. Uh, open it to any of my fellow commissioners for any general comments they'd like to share. Commissioner Smith, yeah?
So, uh, I know I've not been able to make a couple of these meetings, but I want to say congratulations to Jimmy here, and Alkar, if he's looking online, uh, for being the vice chair. Um, looking forward to, uh, working with you guys. We have a pretty busy work plan going into twenty-twenty-three. Should be very exciting. Um, some really good stuff, so I'm just looking forward to a really productive year.
Anything else? Anyone? Lou?
I'm redoing my notes. Obviously, we had a pretty severe ice storm this morning, which I'm sure everyone can attest to. Schools were closed, you know, usually for two hours and everything. This is, uh, pretty unusual for January because we're usually have very cold weather, and so we don't have rain in January. Um, uh, and then we also have this, this horrible air quality, which is, uh, basically all the, um, pollution that gets generated within the Twin Cities, you know, just stays here because there's no wind. So these things resulted in a pretty horrible day for a lot of people. So, um, uh, let's see here. And then on a global level, we've reached the lowest low of Antarctic sea ice ever in January, which is sort of troubling. So, um, I just think it's imperative that the city act on its, uh, climate action goals, so, that's something I'll be working on this year as, as one of my projects, so, thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully tonight's meeting was an uplifting part of the day. Uh, anyone else? All right, move to staff comments. Yeah, hey, we got some.
Actually, this is from Carrie.
Oh, telephone game.
First National Bank, fifty-one-hundred EDINA Industrial Boulevard. I believe that was on your, uh, agenda last time, and it was denied. They have withdrawn, so that is not going to go forward, just FYI. He wanted me to let you know.
Chris, I got, oh. Did, I, I was wondering, anybody had any, um, uh, comments on the council's deliberation on the restaurant site, the one on Vernon? The, the automotive, old, and, I mean, I heard, but I was just wondering if, if anybody would, you know, listened to it and could summarize what their findings were? Did, I, I didn't hear, I mean, I, I think I heard the result, but I was just wondering if there's any more details of how the council...
Right. It was denied, and how big was the correspondence pile that the city received?
So we almost broke the printer.
Yeah.
Um, it was a twenty-five-hundred-page packet, I think, in total. Um, so I know it was denied four to zero. Um, council member Anderson abstained, but I can get you details on the minutes on how the vote went.
But it was unanimous, at least.
It was.
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is that it, everyone? Yeah? Uh, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, yes.